I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order. If you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Gierbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, Dillon, as well as Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, deputy clerk Bloom, city treasurer Bennett, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, city superintendent engineer Rubel. I don't believe Ms. McDonough is here this evening. And we also have wastewater treatment superintendent Bob Skoll with us. The rest of you in the audience this evening, we welcome you, appreciate your participation and attendance, and we welcome you to sign in in the back to my left. I would note there were some changes to the agenda. New business item seventeen dash two eleven, the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance was removed as an action item and is now enumerated as the final item under the discussion portion of the agenda. I was also, it was brought to my attention that council would also like to discuss the state's efforts to reform OPEB, and staff and legal council will provide an update under reports and other announcements. Are there additional changes to the agenda this evening? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just a couple items for the discussion. I'd like an update on fair dene. And then also the cause of the gas leak at six hundred North Maple.
Those will be added without objection. Are there additional changes? Then the chair would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Dillon, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to excuse the absence of our colleague Jack Seo?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second? Seconded again by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of excusing the absence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now with citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act, and a citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess and Mrs. regarding the cemetery task force that met about a month ago. And there was a decision to raise the returnment in the mausoleum from two hundred to five hundred dollars. And that was going to be set the first of the year. Now, I do want to tell you that digging a grave is six hundred and eighty dollars. But I would think the action would be taken by council to authorize that. The other thing is, is that I was told that the digging of the cemetery driveways was going to be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand something. And I noticed on the agenda seventeen one forty-five that tonight it was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, almost a hundred and seventy-eight thousand under potential care. And I was wondering if it could be discussed what the difference was of the fifty-seven thousand.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. So are there additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Matthew Rockwell commenting on that gas main that broke this past week. You guys heard a lot of people over in the park over there due to it. One of my friends lost power and had no power for at least almost a week. And also down, yeah, the corner down there. It was not fixed until I got back home from a meeting. So I think you guys really need to do some research on what streets have been fixed and which ones haven't. Also, a street on my side had a water main leak after you guys repaved it. So I think you guys really need to go through what streets are fixable and which ones are not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Additional citizen comments? Then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve as submitted?
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item seventeen dash one forty-five. This is two thousand seventeen payment pavement, sidewalk, and park project payment number one. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen memo from city superintendent engineer Rubel and to approve or not to approve payment number one to D.N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents for paving and sidewalk projects.
I'm moved to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, would you care to go over your memo of November twenty-ninth?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. The, this is the first draw on the contract, which is, has a fall and spring segment, as I mentioned. And so this is for work completed in the fall. And there's only a few minor restoration items that are being held over till spring because it was too late near to plant grass and get turf to grow. So that'll happen in the springtime when it has a better chance to take root. And so I could answer the question on the cemetery drive that was just voiced by Mrs. Hess. That I think the hundred and twenty-seven thousand was a preliminary estimate before it even was designed and bid. And so, you know, it was just, and so it wasn't based upon what the bidding prices might be for projects in two thousand seventeen. So across the board, asphalt prices cost more and other material prices came up that were higher than expected. But that happened statewide. So the bid that came in for the cemetery was only a hundred and seventy dollars less than the final cost. So it actually was very, very close to the bid amount, the actual quantities put in. So that, that's the answer, cemetery question.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Let's open it up for questions from the dais. Are there questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Yeah, I was looking at that September seventh memo, I guess, where it had estimated of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I just looked at it just a minute ago. That does raise a question. I didn't, I thought we had that bid go out and then we revised because the numbers weren't right at that point. And then it must have gone out a third time? And we got different numbers at this point for final figures? Because I understand there's also an error in this billing related to miscalculation by Midwest. Correct me if I'm wrong about the volumes and numbers that carried forward. So I am concerned that as a result of some of those dollars, did it, would it have affected our original bid? Had the numbers been calculated correctly?
The computation error was due as, was a result of MCI taking quantities off, takeoff off of plans with CAD machine and then putting on spreadsheet. And so there was a factor two on one of the items. Multiplication, like a formula, maybe got misconstrued. But the quantities that were used and installed would have been there had the multiple of two on the one P item not occurred. So the actual materials would have been listed had it done the multiplication correctly. So it, it would have come in at a bidder, at a higher bid price had not the multiplication occurred. So we are paying for what was actually put in and what was required to put in, even though the, the error occurred that didn't recognize the total quantity needed.
Were they the only bidder, though? Or did we have multiple bids?
No, there are multiple bids. And Higgins actually gave us a much lower bid than the second bid bidder. And so, and Higgins is local. They, they helped save us money by finding more economic methods of doing things. They saved us a lot of money in the cemetery project by the way they limited the use of limestone and used it where it was only needed for deeper cuts when it were soft areas and deleterious materials that had to be replaced. And they've, they've done similar things on past projects, for instance, at the rec center and Brecken Park, where they actually paved the parking lot for free.
That's fine, thanks. I was answering a question. I guess I just would like, and because of what was brought up at the citizen comments, is the clarification why there was a big fifty thousand dollar difference between the material costs of what we anticipated and what actually came in on the bid? Because if that's consistent, then I would expect that across all of our projects that we're doing.
Right, yeah. Most everything came in higher because the asphalt prices came in much higher this year. And it had to do with also the time of year, the weather, you know, sort of worked against us, too.
So do we anticipate any problem in the spring when we go to finish?
Well, nothing was able to, was ready to go in the spring for the street projects. And there was a push near the end to, to get them done. Because we were trying to do, you know, salt springs and combine projects to get economy of scale. We did get economy of scale by bidding these six together, or the asphalt prices would have been even higher, you know, prices, and also the concrete. So we took advantage of the economy of scale. We got a contractor who likes working for the city and gives us good prices.
So it just sounds like in the future we just need to be better, a little more closer on what we're doing for our estimates. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. And I guess this would, would be for our city manager as well. I'm curious about, you know, being, being still new and seeing these contracts and seeing the process and role. When there's a mistake like this, is it, do we often take that liability? Or is it written into our contracts? You know, this is our understanding and you might make a mistake. But, you know, if you make a mistake, it's kind of on you. You know, I'm worried about our accepting further liability for a mistake that they made.
Yeah.
And as far as our budget accuracy and our, our efforts to keep, to keep, be good stewards of our costs. Can you talk to that a little bit?
I can do a little bit. I'll let Todd go first, though. He's the city manager.
Well, that, that's fine. I mean, certainly, I mean, we, I, what I would say is it's a case by case. I mean, I mean, certainly, yes, I mean, we want everything to be, to be perfect. When a mistake is made, we want to determine how it's made. In this case, I think it was instead of six thousand square feet, three thousand square feet were initially recorded. And as such, it was a little bit, it was a little bit less. But at the end of the day, I mean, the amount of square footage, is the amount of square footage that was actually removed and then, then put back with, with the new. So, I mean, certainly, there's errors and omissions, those types of things to, to consider as well. But I guess that I think it's, it's a case by case, depending, and also depending on the magnitude.
Yeah, if I could add it. As far as liability questions, certainly an attorney could maybe address some of that. The, there's only, there's, there's the cost absorption. But it's a cost that would have been absorbed anyway, as I mentioned to, to Councilman Gierbaugh, that the quantities were, were needed. They just weren't present. Most of it was present. So, I mean, it's very large projects. So it was less than, probably less than nine percent difference overall between beginning and end. There was extra work required because when they milled the middle part that had a good base and milled the top, they found these trenches that were unstable. Some trench work was put in for utilities. And so that had to be fixed, too. And that was unknown because that was below the top of the asphalt. So, but they sometimes run into things and then you have to address them at the time. So part of it is, was, was due to some of that trench work that they had to address. As far as product liability, the, both the inspectors from MCI and the testing companies from G2 witnessed and did performance tests on materials, placement materials. And so you have, you have the quality there. You have the product reliability, quality assurance there. And so it was acceptable from that standpoint, from record keeping and inspection. And the contractor did a very good job for, you know, the size of the project, awkwardness and difficulty of the project. They, they kept it to a limited amount of time for least impact for downtown residents. So they, they timed everything perfectly for all the subcontractors to work together in, in a really time-efficient sequence, minimize the impact downtown and also produce a quality product.
I'm glad to hear that you're, you're pleased with the quality of the work. So did, did Higgins take any financial, did they share the responsibility at all for this error? Or were we responsible? I used the word liability perhaps incorrectly. I guess I could have used responsibility. But, you know, did, did they share any of the cost for this error?
Well, it's not a situation where the contractor's liable for, for quantities differing. You know, he, the contractor installs what's required to finish the project. It's just that there was a math there in tabulating the quantities from taking them off the plans. The square footage was underestimated, you might say.
So is it the company that underestimated? Higgins underestimated the square footage? Is that right?
No, the engineering consultants, MCI, put together the plans, specifications, bid it out, complete package. So the seven projects together use similar paid quantities, but separated to each because they go into different funds. But the takeoffs for the one project somehow translated on the one pay item had a multiplication error of two.
When you look at projects that we might be doing down the road, what have you learned from this, this set, this set of events that you could apply and, and maybe we could have some more accuracy?
Yeah, well, the, MCI internally, they have a quality control engineer who reviews plans that are produced by one of their staff. So they do an internal review of it. Now, staff really can't do that because staff doesn't man the CAD machine and the spreadsheets that, that put all these formulas together. So by the time we get it, it's, it's in the bid package and it's being bid out. So it would be very difficult for anybody on staff to determine how, what root problem is from taking a plan takeoffs, putting them onto a spreadsheet, and then equivocating that into a bid proposal document with the hundreds of pay items up and down the list. Which there are hundreds. There was at least three or four pages of bid items for the seven projects. And it was only the one item that had a little conundrum, you might say.
If I might, as well, like I said, it's, it's a case by case. An example, back in two thousand nine, we did a era funded through the federal government project, the North Ann Arbor Street. And so we had our, our consultant that, that helped us do that project. And essentially, the, the federal government changed the, when you do an audit, at the end of the day, I think it was actually probably like two years after, something like that, two or three years after the project. But they had essentially changed kind of the rules and, you know, once the project was done and that type of thing. And so they wanted additional information that hadn't been collected. And so when they went back to, I believe, was the, in this particular case, it was a contract, a concrete contractor. And I believe they had maybe gone out of business. And so they couldn't get the information. But they still held, I mean, we were, I think it was about fifteen hundred dollars. So it wasn't a big amount. But we ended up splitting the cost with the, with the consultant because, I mean, we paid them to, to get it right. But at the same time, in all fairness, they changed the rules in the, in the middle of the game. And so my, again, my point is it's, it's a case by case that we, that we continue to, to try and, and work with the consultants at the best of our ability to, to catch any of those, those issues and correct them.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Gierbaugh?
What kind of language, though, is written in our Midwest contract that states when there's an error, whose responsibility is it? I mean, this isn't a question about D.N. Higgins isn't involved. We had to pay them to put the product in. It's a question about we paid, or paying Midwest forty-seven thousand dollars or whatever to do the work that we expect to be accurate and correct. I think Ms. Mitchell is mentioning that's her concern. And I kind of agree with her. And I do agree that we've made some adjustments and so forth. But for me, it would be understanding this because we've paid a lot of money out to consultants as we know with the problem with the rec center, the problem with the DPW roof, and so many else. And this is just another prime example of, at what point do we start saying, wait a minute, we paid you to do something and yet you made the mistake and now we're having to fork up additional money? I guess that would be my clarification for this going forward.
Thank you.
We will definitely follow up on that. Additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Ms. Dillon?
Just for clarification, we did not provide incorrect information, correct?
No, no, it's, we hired a consultants to do the detailed work.
So the error was not on the part of the city at all?
No.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And then my second part is, Mr. Campbell, have we approached Midwest about sharing this fee? Or did we just assume that we were just going to pay it?
No, we did, we did not, as I mentioned, because the, the amount that was removed and put back in, the, the six thousand square feet was, I mean, that's what we, what was required. And we would have had, well, we still would have done the project, I believe. As Mr. Rubel alluded, the bids would have been that much higher had they had the proper square footage.
I understand that we, we use the materials. I guess what I'm going back is to what Mr. Gierbaugh had, had said earlier, which is that we're paying a service to these consultants. And I just feel like time after time, we're getting inaccurate information. And, I mean, in this instance, it's, it's not an issue. But what if it had been to the point where it affected the bid process? And we chose them as a lower bid, but their numbers were, were not quite accurate?
Well, I guess to that point, and I certainly share that concern. Like I said, that's why we, case by case, if it's determined that it's, that cost sharing is appropriate, then we certainly would pursue that.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just one other clarification. There was something about, concern about paying them now versus later or whatever. There was putting, doing hardship on, is that on Higgins? Or what was that? Part of the memo from Midwest was they wanted, I'd have to read the last page of it. I'll have it up. Regarding the payment here, what is it? The last of the bottom of the page. Midwest believes that withholding payment for the slope restoration items listed above would be of a sufficient dollar amount to meet the intent of the retainer. Midwestern would suggest only withholding payment and not using a retainer in the instance because the dollar amount is relatively small and would not justly justify the time and expense for the city to set up an interest-bearing account, so forth. If you could just clarify what that means.
That means we, we chose not to pay for the restoration work, even though it's tied to that project payment. And that would defer that. We wouldn't pay the rest of the project off until spring and they actually performed the work. So that just reinforces the fact that when you withhold the cost of all the work for that pay item, then you wouldn't, having a retainer to perform the work would be sort of redundant.
Okay, no, thanks.
If there's nothing further, we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt moved by Gierbaugh, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. Now, a motion to approve or not to approve payment number one to D.N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents for the paving, for paving and sidewalk projects, excuse me.
Moved to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gierbaugh. Discussion. Mr. Gierbaugh?
I'm going to approve this at this point. But I think we do have some time left on this contract to negotiate anything with Midwest in terms of the error going forward. So if there's some minor thing or whatever happens, we potentially could still reconsider. But I'd like to get this page. I don't want to hold D.N. Higgins up.
Additional comments? Ms. Tahar and then Ms. Dillon?
Yes, I would agree. D.N. Higgins performed what we asked them to perform. And we're paying for services that were actually rendered at high quality. So I'm, I'm very clear, it's very clear to me that this should be paid.
Ms. Dillon, thank you, Ms. Tahar.
I just had one question regarding the Torwood subdivision. And it seemed like that project was a little bit more expansive than we had thought. And so other parts of it were cut out. Is that going to impact? Because aren't there other areas within Torwood that are going to need that same type of work?
Well, Jeff is going to redo his budget to look at doing the second two parts. So that's something we have to do over winter.
Okay.
We had enough money to do the middle part, but not enough to do all three parts.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierbaugh to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rubel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to new business, item seventeen dash two oh nine. This is an exciting one. Weight room equipment agreement, Recreation Department. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen memo from Parks and Rec director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve the recommendation by director Scruggs to award these, to award and split the weight room equipment bid to Matrix, Fitness Things, Forte Fitness, and Direct Fitness for a total amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Moved to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Director Scruggs, the floor adjourners.
Thank you. Something I might throw. Sorry about that. So a couple of weeks ago, we received, we had put out a request for proposal and received bids back in from four different companies. The company that we've dealt with for a long time, All-Pro Fitness, actually sold to Fitness Things. So Fitness Things has taken on the contract of, of the buyback for our current equipment. So when we put out, we did a couple of demos of newer machines that we've never seen before. We had them at the rec center for a couple of weeks. We got some feedback from customers. And they were very well received. The, the new ones being, it's an Octane Zero Runner, a Stairmaster Gauntlet, and, sorry, and a Cybex Arc Trainer. There, there are different types of movements that, that they do. The Zero Runner simulates actual running. It feels like you're, you're really running. It has the same stride as when you're out on the, on the pavement, but zero impact on your knees and whatnot. But in any event, we put together a list of all the equipment that was, that we, has now had the three-year lifespan that really need to go, such as the treadmills, ellipticals. There's an Octane, one of the Octane Lateral X's, our Ab Solo machine. Those, those pieces of machines just get used constantly. We have over a hundred thousand miles on each one of the treadmills. And they're also out of warranty now. After three years, the warranty's gone. So now, if we were to keep those machines, we'd have to pay the parts and labors to, to repair those. We've been on a, every three-year cycle to sell back or do a buyback for the existing equipment and then get in new equipment, just to keep everything fresh. We start off on a new three-year warranty for all the equipment, which include parts and labor. So like I said, we, we demoed a few pieces of equipment. We came up with the list of the treadmills, the ellipticals, the Octane X1 elliptical, Octane Zero Runner, Stairmaster Gauntlet, Octane Lateral X, a Jacob's Ladder, CyFit, Cybex Arc Trainer, an upright bike, and a Recumbent Bike. Those were the pieces of machine, the new pieces that we bid out. In this, the, the fitness organization has kind of changed, or the industry has changed somewhat. Not ever, not one place carries everything. They're, they're more specialized now. So when we put this out, we had a lot of alternate bids. And we did our research and evaluated the alternates, whether they met our specs or what we were trying to accomplish. what we were trying to accomplish. Quite a few did not. That's why we have a split bid. This is the first time we've ever had to split the bid. In the past, like All Pro would carry everything that we had requested, or they had access to all of that. They don't have that now. So what we did is, we reviewed all the alternates, eliminated the ones that didn't meet our specs. We looked for the low bid on the equipment that we had specified. We did take one alternate for an Octane Lateral X. We chose to go with a Helix, which is a different brand, but a similar thing, plus we already carry, or we're keeping an Octane Lateral X. So we'll have a lateral X, plus we're adding in a Helix, which I think our customers will really like. In any event, like in the motion, we've split the bid, and we're also, it's Fitness Things is doing the buyback of $18,000 for our current equipment. It's a 25% buyback. So that will go into our revenue side. Plus, we're trading in three pieces of equipment that are really out of date. Our CyFit, which we're replacing, we've had for 25 years. We can't get parts for it any longer, but it will fetch a couple of hundred dollars in a trade-in. Same with the Precor upright bike and a True recumbent bike. Those pieces are out of warranty, parts are very, very expensive, or we can't get them. So we'll fetch a little bit of money back for trading those in. So essentially, our budgeted amount was $80,000. That's what we had estimated. Our bids came in under that, plus with the buyback, we'll end up spending about $59,000 and some change.
Great. Very well done. Let me, before I open it up for questions, let me just say that I am strongly in favor of this motion. I was able to talk to a number of customers and also use a number of the pieces of demo equipment myself. And I also did a little bit of independent research, and I think you're absolutely right. They were well-received. They're well-reviewed by the industry. And I think it's really important, actually, I think it's critically important that we continue to invest in new equipment to make the rec center relevant and appealing and cutting-edge for our customers. And again, I applaud you and your staff for your work on this. I think it's perfectly appropriate to split the bid. And coming in under budget at $78,000 and some change, plus the amount that we'll receive from the buyback, what did you say the amount was?
$18,778.
So we're spending in the, what, $59,000?
$59,067.
And you budgeted 80?
Yes.
So, again, indicative of being good stewards of public resources. Excellent. Thanks, Carla. Questions for our Parks and Rec. Director? Mr. Gierba.
Just real quick, Carla, is this a one-time payment now, or is it spread over three years?
No, one-time payment now. And then the buyback comes at the end. And each one of them have a different percentage. So on the spreadsheet at the bottom, it says the buyback percentage.
So do you, do we anticipate an $80,000 payment to replace equipment every year or every three years?
Every three years.
So we are built that way?
Okay. So these pieces of equipment, when we buy them, they'll be under a three-year parts and labor warranty per our contract. And then after the three years, we'll trade those in and then get three new, or get new pieces of equipment.
Okay. So it's not every year, it's every three years?
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mayor Portem Tarz, then Councilwoman Dillon.
Yes, thank you. So if it's a split bid, does this mean responsibility for repairs now is split too, and you have to call all these?
That's correct. How it's worked...
Okay, best wishes for that.
Yeah, and each one of them, I've talked to, for example, Matrix. This is a new company. They now sell direct. Before, they wouldn't sell direct. You'd have to go through a middleman. But U of M uses Matrix, that, their rep, I got to speak with him. They're very satisfied with their response time on repairs and whatnot. Every single one of these companies have been, come with very good recommendations. And my maintenance staff, Brian, does an excellent job of working with each of them. He can do a lot of the repairs, but we need the parts, and as long as we can get them, we can get them back up and running.
So the burden for this will fall on your staff?
Correct.
On you and your staff to communicate with all of these people.
Yeah.
Anything further, Mayor Portem?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dillon?
Mayor Portem pretty much answered my question, or asked my question, which was, having only dealt previously with All Pro, were you comfortable dealing with these other companies? And, you know, and you've just answered that, so thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
I just have a comment. I really appreciate Ms. Scruggs, that the way you put together this information was very concise, it, you know, it's accurate. And thank you so much for your presentation of information, and I am so grateful for that.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. It has been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-210. This is Recreation Center Membership Rates and Services. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 20th, 2017 memo from Parks and Rec. Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the recommended changes to the membership fees and services at the Celine Recreation Center as outlined in Director Scruggs' memo.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Director Scruggs, of course, we had a good, thoughtful discussion at our most recent work meeting, and I believe, unless I'm mistaken, you had an opportunity to sit down with both Councilwoman Dillon and CO, who were not able to attend our last work meeting. So maybe just a brief 30-second synopsis of your memo?
I will do it, definitely. So the recommendations for changes or improvements that I have is adjusting our age limit, or our ages. So currently, our child is ages three to 17. My recommendation is to extend that to 18. And then an adult would be 19 to 59, and seniors do not change at 60 and over. The reason for that briefly is generally, 18-year-olds are still in high school. For most of the year, they're paying $5 to get in and play basketball or whatnot, and as soon as they turn 18, and they're still in school, now they're bumped up to $12. So we thought through the high school age, we would keep it as a youth rate of the $5. And then once they're in college, then they're considered an adult at that point. So that's the change for there. Also, we're asking to extend the number of our fitness class offerings from 36 to 42. So we're adding six additional free fitness classes that would be part of the membership. This was very well-received when we initiated this four years ago, when we rolled out all of our new things. I believe with a rate increase, having this as a minimal, there's expenditure associated with this, but it's very minimal compared to what we're going to receive from members. And then also, offering an alternative for our free weight room rules, where we would offer a class for 14- and 15-year-olds, where they would have to take this class, pass it, in order to be able to use the free weight room during supervised hours. And then that, we would be adding in about 21 hours a week, so three hours a day of time where that would be supervised, where the 14- and 15-year-olds could use that. Then also, we're asking for a 10% increase in membership fees. We did a thorough survey of area of fitness centers and different places around the surrounding area, and with a 10% increase, we're still in that mid-to-lower wage, or fee base, extending the family extension fee from $50 to $100. We found that that is a very minimal, minimal change there. And then working with the senior center on a membership program, I explained it briefly, but essentially, we would do, honor whatever they, a senior citizen would pay. At the senior center, we would use that as a rate deduction for whatever membership fee they qualify for, whatever one they, or package that they pick to join. And Nancy Cowan, the director of the senior center, and I would work out the rules or policy on that. And that's essentially it in a nutshell.
Excellent. Okay. Are there questions for Director Scruggs? Discussion. Mr. Gierba.
No, I think this is a good approach. I mean, as long as we're giving additional classes, it's only a $2 a month increase. I know there's other things that are going to be hitting people as a result of some things that have changed just recently over the last week, so we don't know where those expenses and things are going to come from, but I'm hoping that because this is a good deal for what's offered and the ability to have swing pool and everything, we do need to be able to be cost-effective, but we also need to charge an effective rate, so I think this is good. We haven't had a rate increase in four years.
Approaching our fifth year.
And generally, you would have something in that kind of a period of time.
Right.
At least to cover inflation, so, thank you. I think this is a good job.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Director Scruggs, just a suggestion, I think we're probably too late for the upcoming FYI newsletter, but will you have some verbiage, and will you message on this in one of our forthcoming FYI newsletters?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
The other thing, you and I can chat afterwards, but...
Oh, okay.
The new investment in equipment and these changes in rates and services might be a good discussion to, might be a good focus for an upcoming coffee hour.
Sure.
But you and I can chat about that.
Definitely.
Just to get the narrative and the message out to the community. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Anything further? They will proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-212. This is proposed ordinance number 794, minor in possession of alcohol ordinance. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16, 2017 memo from Emily Reisberg, and to approve and adopt or not to approve proposed ordinance number 794, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-25 regarding use of alcohol by minors, to add Sections 6-26 regarding furnishing or using fraudulent identification, and to repeal Charter 58, Division 1, Section 58 through 358 of the Code of Ordinances regarding use of alcohol and drugs by minors.
I move to acknowledge receipt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Mr. Campbell, do you want to take the lead on this, or would you prefer Attorney Smith to comment?
I can start, and then if Attorney Smith needs to. So this is essentially to agree, to make our city ordinance agree with recent changes to state law. This was brought to our attention by our, the city prosecutor attorney, Mr. O'Jack. And as the cover memo talks about, the amendment's changing the first offense is no longer a misdemeanor, but a civil infraction for minor in possession. If a minor refuses a preliminary breath test, then in order to require that, and the minor to do that, then they would have to get a court order to do so. Of course, it clarifies, clarifies some definition for prior judgment, sacrament of wine, et cetera, as far as using, prohibits the use of fraudulent identification by minors to enter, obtain alcohol in establishments that restricted to those 21 years of age or older. And so, and then also the section that talks about illegal drug use is now handled in the same manner as illegal use by adults. And like I said, this puts us in alignment with the new state law. So, Mr. Smith, if there's anything that I missed, or...
All right, let's open it up for questions. Are there questions from the dais? Mr. Gierba?
This is clearly just alcohol. It has nothing to do with drugs.
The only provision that has to do with drugs is we've taken out the illegal drug use by minors because we charge them under state law, and so the prosecutor prosecutes those offenses.
Got it. Thank you.
Additional questions? Well, then, let's vote then on the motion to acknowledge receipt. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 16th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve and adopt, or to not to approve?
Move to approve and adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so again, moved by Gierba, seconded by McClellan. Any discussion? They will proceed to vote. All those in favor approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to new business item 17-213. This is resolution for redevelopment-ready community, redevelopment-ready community, excuse me. This is also an issue that we discussed at a recent work session. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 29th, 2017 memo from Treasurer Bennett, to approve or not to approve the resolution to proceed with the redevelopment-ready communities, RRC program.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. That was a second by Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bennett, care to make any comment?
If there's any questions, or you want to brief...
Why don't you give us a two-minute rundown on the program, the benefits?
Sure, two minutes? Timer? So at the November 13th work session, you had Ryan and Dominic from the City of Michigan who came out and reviewed our findings from the readiness redevelopment self-evaluation, which basically, when we made the original intent to have this fact-finding, what we were opening ourselves up to do is to have the state review our current practices on businesses coming into the community, our public participation policy, and how we treat people, or how we treat developers, and how we're preparing to be accommodating, to build and attractive. And by doing this, what this does is does qualify us for some additional state funding in the event of a developer that would meet the qualifications from the State of Michigan. So with the help of Gary Rubel and our Celine Main Street director, Riley, at the time, we did the fact-finding, submitted it, and at the work meeting, I think he presented to you a couple of areas where he suggested we can make some improvements, which I think we're in the process of doing that. We also have, we're lacking, while we do public participation, we don't have a process, a written process. They encouraged us to do that. And then the area where we failed to have anything really is a vision for the properties that we would like to see redeveloped. And I'm working with the State of Michigan to kind of clarify that. We do have some vacant lands that, when I'm thinking of redevelop, I'm, you know, I'm thinking like similar to what happened at the Imagine Movie Theater, but the state assures me that we could use those existing vacant lands that we have. Our vision is, obviously, to sell those and to get them on there, so that could be a step in the right direction, too. So this resolution is a formality that the state wants us to file within so many days after the fact-finding to say that, yes, we're really going to pursue this, that we're not just doing this to be engaged. I do plan on, I have been working with the state. We recently just published our properties on another state website out there, you know, for those properties, and I'm working with the Celine Main Street about getting their vacant properties, which also will qualify us. So I think this is going to be something that we can probably wrap up here in the near future. And this resolution, again, is just saying that we do intend to take those findings that the state have and implement the changes. So there were, another piece was the public participation policy, which we've drafted. I'm just kind of reviewing it, having everybody else review it to make sure that it's really how we do it. So that will be coming forward, and then we'll just stay tuned.
Excellent. Well, like I stated at our work session, I believe that this is a very valuable program. As was shared during the presentation on this initiative, we're already complying with a number of requirements. There's a few deficiencies that I'm sure you and our colleagues will continue to work on. Please keep us in the loop, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that council members have at this time. Ms. Mitchell?
I just wanted to comment that this is one of the sessions that I went to during the Fall Michigan Municipal League, and I so appreciate your work on this, Ms. Bennett, and I appreciate our city's impetus in moving forward. As far as the plan for development of existing possible land, the advantage is if we come up with ideas as far as what could fit there, the development part happens much more quickly. So that was one of the points the panel really pushed on, is that if we have even some spec drawings that are appropriate and what we think is a good fit, there's a much more attractive prospect for developers. So I'm excited to see that.
I think it expands our market quite a bit, too, because, you know, people who are maybe from out of state looking, they'll start at the state level, and if our name's up there, it would be better than, you know, having, so I think it's, it can't, I don't want to say that, but it, you know, it's more good than I think it can. We thought at first it might be very time-consuming, but we really have ironed out a lot of the processes, and Gary was super at sitting down and going through that. And I don't know if he mentioned it at the meeting or not, but they actually requested a list of developers that we've worked with and things like that, that they actually called and interviewed, and we received, the council and the staff received very good comments about working with developers in Celine. So that's very positive for you and as well.
Good. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Two is, do we have a timeframe for the completion of the 8%? Like, do we have our own deadline? Does the state impose a deadline of...
In the fact-findings, there were estimated guidelines of when they thought we would have it done. Most of it's 2018. I think there's some things that go maybe... I think there's some things that go maybe out to the second or third quarter of twenty eighteen on their timeline. I tell you personally, I think we can, with the little things that we have, I'm submitting them as we accomplish them, and it's my goal to get it off my list.
Okay.
It's my, I wouldn't want to say it's my New Year's resolution, but, I mean, we're working on getting it done sooner.
The second part of my question is that it seems as though now the city's going to be doing a tremendous amount of marketing of our properties ourselves through this avenue. I mean, how does this impact what we're paying for realtor fees?
Basically, we're not, we're not really doing the marketing. We're linking our website and our direction to our realtor, which basically would be Swisher. And then the other ones, Swisher provided all of that information to the state. So, he's doing
Okay, so he's still as part of the command?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're just providing the links.
Okay.
And now, Celine Main Street, obviously, those are just vacant buildings. Those change all the time, and we don't use Swisher for that anyway.
Right.
It's just the, the only thing that, that contract is for our vacant properties, and that's provided all on, on their website, and they had to consent to provide that link.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't circumventing or doubling. Thank you.
Nope.
Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, could I take, now, the program was, it could be even privately held lands, is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
From what they were talking about at the work meeting?
Yep.
So, if there's, you know, members of the public that are out that want to market a property, or want to market a building, or whatever, they could link into this system once it's set up and, and kind of have a classified add as
Yeah, actually, one of the, one of the examples they used is if you had a project that needed additional funding or something like that, through the, you know, if we identified that, hey, we have this project, we're not being able, the, the developer is having issues doing this or this, they would, we could make that one of our sites, and they could put it out there and, on their website and say, this is what's needed to make this happen. So, yes, absolutely, it could be privately held, not just city-held, which is why I'm linking them also to the Celine Main Street. So, there's not really a lot of additional work. I'm just linking and directing to existing websites and such.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything further? No discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to the last action item of the evening, another issue that we discussed recently at a work session. This is new business item seventeen dash two fourteen, retiree healthcare. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the BCBSM Medicare Advantage Addendum for Retiree Healthcare, and to authorize or not authorize, the City Manager Campbell to sign the addendum.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Mr. Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Morrow mentioned, back in, I believe it was November thirteenth work session, city staff with the assistance of, of Capnic Insurance, so Beth Madsiare from, from Capnic Insurance, as well as Rose Cook from Blue Cross Blue Shield, welcome. Is here, they're both here to, to discuss or answer detailed questions, but, so, back on November thirteenth work session, talking about some changes for our, the Medicare-eligible retirees to the, to the Medicare Advantage Plan, which they can, I'll turn over to Beth here in a moment. She can speak much more eloquently about it, but it makes a much more efficient program and, and that way reduces costs. But most importantly, it's essentially mirrors, for the most part, the, the current plans and what they offer. There are a couple items that aren't quite as good, but there's also a number of things that are actually better. So, overall, as we look through this in great detail, with also, with assistance from our legal, our legal counsel, our labor legal counsel, Mr. Gerard, as well as Capnic, and also from Blue Cross Blue Shield, to, to look at side-by-side comparisons, to say that they, they mirror each other pretty doggone close. And so, we would propose to make this change. And also, just as a, as a note, if this goes forward, we will be sending out, of course, a letter to retirees, and also be inviting them to an open enrollment session with specific to them for this, this proposed change. So, do, we're happy to do our best to answer any questions.
Questions from the dais? No questions from the dais? No questions?
No. My question's more about communication and just that.
Okay. Well, if there's no questions from the dais, then we'll proceed to vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt of the November twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen memo from City Manager Campbell signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. How about now a motion to approve or not to approve, and to authorize or not authorize?
Move to approve and to authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Ms. Mitchell be the second on that. Discussion. Mr. Gierba?
As you know, I've been wanting to move this way for the many years that I've been on council, to try and assess the way to effectively address our costs. I think this is a good way to go ahead. I was actually surprised at how well this compares to what they currently have. So, it's really not a huge impact. It may be, but it's nothing that I think everyone has, has been affected by, but not to the degree that I think a lot of had been hit. My one concern about, of course, is communication, so we need to make sure that the, this is communicated out. It's going to be a change. So, it is a change. It's not something that's going to be reconsidered at a point in time from now on up. And I don't know if we've had any feedback or not from the retirees, but from my perspective, I think this is a suitable way to approach it. The other fact that we will potentially save eighty thousand dollars a year, which we can then put towards a retiree oped, well, what I would say are savings or potential liability that we have to address. This is what's going to keep this as being able to be viable for this city. Otherwise, I think the state's going to force it upon us, and it may not be a happy ending for anybody. So, I think this is a great way to go forward.
Additional comments? Well, let me add, let me begin by saying, I think I speak for everyone on the dais when, when I express our, our continuing gratitude and appreciation for our retirees and all they have done to make our city the exceptional place that it is. Like Mr. Gierba, I am strongly in favor of, of this motion, something I've been wanting to pursue and advocated for, for a number of years. As he stated, and as Mr. Campbell articulates in his memo, this still provides our retirees with a really quality product. There are a few things that are, are different. There are a few things that will change, and that's why it's so critically important to communicate proactively with them and provide them a forum to address whatever questions and concerns that they, they may have. At the same time, as was previously mentioned, this saves the city approximately eighty thousand dollars a year, which be, can be allocated to other critical areas like our unfunded liability. So, I think this is a very positive step in the right direction. I appreciate City Manager Campbell's leadership on this, as well as you ladies from Capnic, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield. We appreciate your efforts, and appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you very much for allowing us.
Thank you.
Anything further? Proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Mitchell, to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Again, ladies, thank you. Have a good evening. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Mayor Protam Tar.
Yes, the Code Review Task Force met last week, and in addition to the nondiscrimination ordinance, which we'll talk about later, also continued working on ordinance changes or creation for massage facilities and food trucks, and those are moving forward, so we'll be seeing them at some point next year.
Very good. Additional committee commissioner task force reports. Reports or other announcements? Dillon, do you want to begin with OPEB reform? I did send out an email earlier this evening. I think it was a recent article from the MERS newsletter, but I believe that our attorney Smith can provide some additional insights, and then we'll open it up for questions.
So, last week, there was a twelve or fourteen bill package dropped on OPEB reforms and pension reforms. It's a long way from being completed. I noticed from what the mayor sent out from MERS that Speaker of the House Leonard, for example, has a number of questions about it. So, while we might have consensus among Senate Republicans, there's a long ways to go. I also note that police, fire, and sheriffs unions have some concerns about this legislation. So, again, like the federal tax reform, you can see that the sausage is a long way from being made. Basically, it does a number of things. Close plans, stay closed. You can't reopen them. There's a need to pay a hundred percent of normal OPEB cost by two thousand twenty-three, or to be a hundred percent funded of those, and to pay a hundred percent of the ongoing cost of that by two thousand twenty-three. In checking with Mickey Joe, we're about thirty percent now on those OPEB costs, and this action that you just took should make that look even better. You have to be at twenty-three percent next year. So, you already exceed that requirement. It requires a uniform system of calculating the OPEB and pension liabilities, so there's a uniform way of doing the actuarial calculations, a uniform reporting method. It's going to require accountability to the State of Michigan, so that those that are underfunded will have to develop a plan for bringing their funding up. There's possibility of, of an appointment of a state committee, or even an emergency manager kind of situation in order to bring that OPEB and pension obligations into compliance. And then the other bills were changes to the Open Meetings Act, changes to the Home Rule Cities Act, the township statutes, the county statutes, and so forth, to bring them all in conformance, and to require compliance then with this new law about post-retirement liability.
Very thorough, Mr. Smith. Are there questions for our city attorney at this time? Mr. Gierba?
That was just what I wanted to know, because I know we're trying to figure out what we're doing, and I know Lansing doesn't necessarily know what it's doing either. But I know that a lot of this could get shoved through, and there has been a lot of concern. And that's kind of why I wanted to have a little touch base on it, and at least we know that we're a little bit ahead of the game at this point, so.
Right. My understanding is that this is a priority of, of the Republicans, and they are going to try to push it yet this year. Don't know whether they'll be successful or not. Frankly, I'm not understanding why there's this, there's a number of pieces of legislation that they're pushing that affect local governments, and I'm not understanding it, because it's not a lame duck year. You know, January and December are really the same in this legislative calendar, because it's the continuation of the same legislative session. So, I'm not understanding the felt urgency that some have.
Okay. We'll certainly keep everyone in the loop, but also keep your eyes open for email updates from both SEMCOG, and then I believe that Chris Hackbarth from MML has also been corresponding to local electeds on this.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, I really appreciate hearing that we're at thirty percent, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that my, my city is a little ahead of the game. Do we have projections with the action that we took tonight? Are we, in twenty twenty-three, do we have an idea? If we took no further action, do we know where we would be at our percentage?
Well, there, there are two or three things. One, we need to figure out how the state's calculating all of that, and whether our calculations are the same methodology as they're going to now require in statute. So, it, it's really not possible to say whether we're comparing apples and apples to this point, till we figure that out. Secondly, you know, that, that depends on what other measures we take, and that's going to change on a year-to-year basis. It depends on how many retiree, active retirees we have. It, it depends on other kinds of factors. So, we can have those projections, and I know in talking with Todd and Mickey Joe just before the meeting, they intend to come up with those projections
Okay.
as, as soon as we can reasonably figure out what the correct methodology is, because what we don't want to do is mislead you or the public based on what is not yet finalized legislation.
I see.
Okay. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Anything further? Be sure to keep you in the loop on this. Mr. Smith, thank you. Appreciate your analysis. Are there any other reports or announcements? Mr. Gierba?
Just real quick, I want to let everybody, invite everybody to Christmas at the Farm starts this Saturday for the next three weekends. From eleven to three, you'll have the opportunity to see the farmhouse decorated for Christmas, and cookies, and whatever else are out there. So, we encourage everyone to attend. Thank you.
Very good. If there are no additional announcements, how about an update on our wastewater treatment plant? Mr. Skoll?
There's not a whole lot to report from the last time. Tetra Tech's been out to locate utilities for the design portion. The design of the vent work is continuing. It's been modified as time goes by and as the situation warrants. You know, when they, you design something on a drawing board, it's a lot different than when you get out to the actual plant. Everything's running smooth. The filters are still going, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Skoll? Ms. Mitchell?
How are you doing as far as odor complaints now compared to last month, please?
We had two since the last time I was here. One was emailed to me, and one was see click fix.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Skoll? Bob, thanks. Appreciate your time. Administrative ordinance amendment. If you recall, I distributed a paper copy of the proposed amended ordinance that was prepared by Steve Gerard's office at our last meeting. I believe, unless I'm mistaken, the deputy clerk then sent everyone an electronic copy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom, thank you. So, I bring it forward tonight to see if you have any questions or concerns that either I could address, or the city manager could address, or if we cannot, we can forward to Mr. Gerard. It is unlikely that Mr. Gerard will be able to be present at our next council meeting, so I do want to understand your concerns and questions in advance of our next meeting on the eighteenth, because it is the chair's desire to have this as an action item on the eighteenth, and hopefully approved. So, of course, if you don't have any questions or concerns at this juncture, that's fine, but I would strongly encourage you to proactively communicate those to the city manager before the eighteenth. Are there questions, concerns, tonight? Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted to follow up on a conversation we had earlier
Please.
with some of the language, where in the first paragraph, it talks about city administrator. Is that actually an active position that we have?
City administrator and city manager interchangeable per, and that's, that's per the, the ordinance.
Okay. And then it talks about building official. Do we, I, I guess what I'd like to make sure is that we're, we're using the wording that we use for the job titles currently. I mean, do we call Mr. Skoll the Pollution Control Superintendent?
Yes.
That's?
That's per, that's per the current ordinance.
Okay.
I think those are the terms that are listed in the charter, actually, and that's where that terminology comes from, and that's why the ordinance borrows those terms.
Well, not all those terms are in the charter, though.
But many of those terms are in the charter, and that's why they're, they're being used in that way.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that, how those, the title in here matches up to the employee title that we have currently.
I, I, if I may, Ms. Dillon, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
I, I share, I share some of your concerns. I, I'm not a lawyer, and I, I don't draft ordinances for a living, but in that first section, Section A, it seems redundant to list both city manager and city administrator. But if staff is telling me that that's appropriate, I'm, I'm comfortable proceeding.
That's fine. However, it's that way. And then the, in the, is it necessary to actually list the salary of the city manager and the chief, please? Because by that, wouldn't we have to change the ordinance each year?
We, in anticipation of that question, or because Todd forwarded that information to us, we have worked with Mr. Gerard and have suggested an alternative to the ordinance language that's there, so that you can set it every year, but you can do it by a simple resolution rather than an ordinance change. And if it's the consensus of council that that's the way you want to go, we'll simply substitute that when it's on for consideration. substitute that when it's on for consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my last comment was just, it would be helpful going forward to get red lines of what has changed, so that we can see. I've, in my eye, that makes it much easier to know what's been added, or more importantly, what's been deleted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Dillon and I discussed that today, and I think that would be helpful for city council to see a red line version of the existing policy. Ms. Mitchell?
I'm sorry, could I please have just a quick clarification? When Ms. Dillon asked about the salaries, what was the proposed solution for that? I just didn't.
Do you want to restate that for the record, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, you would still set it by every year, but you would set it by resolution, or by approving a contract amendment, rather than doing an ordinance change. So, rather than changing the law, which is the ordinance, you'd do it by a simple resolution that would change the internal policy, or would amend a contract, an employment contract. And it could still be done on an annual basis, or as frequently as you want to do it.
And so, what would the bottom, Section 252, what would that say?
It would simply say, "Council shall set it from time to time by resolution."
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's almost word-for-word what the proposal language says.
I think that would be much more appropriate. Yeah. Mr. Har, I'm sorry to pass you by. Did you have a question or comment?
Well, my question was about Section 2-52. Because I had, I believe, raised this question earlier as well. It's simpler, simply, it's simpler to have a resolution than to change the entire ordinance, a simpler process.
Right. And then, we don't need to send it to the code codifiers, and all of that kind of thing. So, the simple resolution, it might be a resolution adopting a contract amendment. It might be a resolution that's a little more complicated, that you'll change the salary, but there's another benefit that changes, or something else in that contract.
Okay. Good. Then, I would support that as well, in favor of simplifying where we can.
It simply gives you control and flexibility more than just setting this by ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions? Okay. Then again, this will be an action item. I'd like to go all the way with this, and get it approved at our next meeting on December 18th. In the interim, if you have additional questions, concerns, or thoughts, please direct those to the city manager. Up next is the nondiscrimination ordinance. Mayor Potemtahar is the chair of the working group, as well as a member of the code ordinance review task force. Do you task force, do you want to give an update on this?
Yes. Thank you. So, the version that we received in our packet as Item 17-211 is the most recent version of the, or the most recent draft. Some changes have occurred since the draft that you saw in, I believe, October. So, the first thing to say about this for council colleagues and for the public is to please take a look at this, study it, and if you have questions, bring them to members of the task force, or to Mr. Campbell. If we need to consult with Mr. Smith, Mr. Campbell can organize that. So, the task, the Code Review Task Force, last week, week before last, received first the PowerPoint overview that Mr. Smith had prepared for the work session, that gives the content, the context, and the structural, the overview of the ordinance draft. And then, last week, the task force members received this version that we also have received in our packets for review. So, at the meeting, there was discussion of this draft. Some questions were raised. Nick Curcio from the city attorney's office was present at that meeting and answered some questions. I was able to answer some questions. Mr. Curcio also took notes about questions that would be taken back and discussed further with Mr. Smith. The questions ranged from clarifications, questions about definitions, questions about meaning of various areas. And the comment was made, which I think that my fellow working group members would heartily agree. This is a very dense document, and the members of the task force felt that it was a lot to digest in a relatively short period of time. So, their request was that the city attorney would report back to the task force with answers, or comments, or clarifications for the questions that were raised, and that the task force would have more time to review and discuss this draft at a future meeting. So, again, you have in your hands the latest version. Please review. Please ask questions. Please make comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Mr. Gierball?
Yeah, I believe there are going to be some changes to the way this ordinance is written at this current time. There were some concerns that were brought to our attention, and I think we need to heavily weigh those as a council to decide how this is going to move forward.
Anything further? Thank you all. Oh, Ms. Dillon, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I wanted to ask, once again, if we can please have a red line version from what has changed from what was done previously to what's now. That would make things very helpful. And then, I guess my other question was, when you had commented, Mr. Har, about receiving questions, from whom were the questions?
This was members of the task force, the Code Review Task Force. Based on their, on their review.
Okay. So, you have not received public comments that has impacted this document at this point?
Well, there have been, there have been comments that have come since the first, the work meeting at which the, whatever draft that was, was first reviewed and discussed. Members of the public commented and asked questions. Those were passed on to Mr. Smith. There were members, so there were, and there were, we've had a member of the Fair Housing, Michigan Fair Housing Commission has reviewed the document and commented. Staff from Equality of Michigan have commented, discussed with Mr. Smith on a couple of, a couple of different occasions. So, and the task force has also had continuing discussions. So, there's been a lot of input from a number of sources.
Okay. Thank you.
And of course, I note to the record, if there are citizens who have comments, have concerns, have suggestions, I would still strongly encourage them to begin in touch with Ms. Tahar, or council members, Gierball, or Mitchell to share those thoughts. We welcome your ideas and your suggestions. If there's nothing further on that, I believe it was council member Gierball who suggested an update, or recommended, excuse me, that we receive an update on the Fair Dean development, as well as the gas leak that occurred last week at the old service station adjacent to the library. Mr. Campbell, do you want to give an update on both of those, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reference Fair Dean, of course, Mr. Farrell, the developer of 207 Monroe Street, was at the last council meeting, providing an update of proposed changes. Also talked about demolishing of the house structure. I reached out to Mr. Farrell last Friday to find out status, and he's been working through. The demolition permit is still, my understanding is still waiting on, or at least as of last Friday, was still waiting on responses from the utilities, which is MichCon, DTE, telecommunications to determine that the, they've been, the disconnections have been made, or if they haven't, when they would be made. So, I did offer, the city could, I could reach out to our governmental contacts at those utilities to see if we can help expedite the process, and he said that he would let me know if he wanted that assistance. And that's kind of where that is currently, right now. And then, as far as the gas main leak at 600 Maple, was due to the contractor that's doing the excavation work hitting the line coming into the site. And that was capped and repaired. It worked out very well, obviously, when you'd rather not have that, but if we had to have it, it was, the timing was, was good, as far as it was right at the end of the school day for the middle school, so that really didn't have a significant impact there. And then, the, as far as teamwork between, our public safety, between police, fire, DPW, and DTE, DTE was, critical response teams were there, and did a great, that's my term, by the way. Now, I don't know if they call them, but I would call it a critical response team. They did a great job as well. The wind was right. It kept, you know, it was coming out of the south-southwest and pushing it away from the residential area. So, be happy to do my best to answer questions.
Any questions for the city manager? First, Ms. Mitchell, and then Mr. Gierball.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Did you have any feedback from the public on how we put information out? Was that sufficient for them, or there were people that wanted something different?
I did not hear anything contrary, or different, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Gierball?
Just a couple of things. The first, on the Fair Dean property, or Mr. Farrell's request about, has not requested us to reach out to our government agencies. I would like to see us reach out to find out whether or not those requests have been put in place. I think this has been long enough on this house, and continuing to hear the same delays are not suitable to me. I don't know about the rest of the council, but at this point, it's been six, it's been more than that. It's been 10 months. So, at some point, we have to proceed a different route if we need to be. And I'm not so sure that the rest of this development's going to occur, as he thinks it's going to occur. So, at this point, I really want to see that house down. The other thing with the, the hole seems to be rather deep. Was the reason for hitting the gas main, they just didn't know the depth? Or was it just something, I'm concerned because of Miss Dig and some of that kind of stuff, but I don't know if it was a gas line that they weren't aware of was on the property at this point, or?
My understanding that it had been marked earlier that day.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Because I just noticed recently a marking that was done at my property for an electric line, and they were off by at least three feet, because I remember where it was put in. So, I'm not sure how they're marking stuff at this point.
Additional questions? No? Okay. Then we'll proceed. If there's nothing further, the discussion portion of the agenda, the public comments, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Heth. And I was reading on the letter that you passed tonight on the asphalt in the sidewalk. I noticed that parking lot four was bid at $177,000, and yet, the amount of the building came out, $142,000. That's a good deal. And then, it was said to come into the, they had to arrive for major adjustments were made. They had to delete the asphalt fiber mix reinforcement from parking lot four and the cemetery drive. I still have a question on the differences in that everything else came in line, except parking lot four came in $30,000 less. And I was wondering, were you going to address the task force, the cemetery task force for the people as far as the increase of costs? Thank you.
There are additional citizen comments? Please, Mr. Rockwell?
This one is regarding 17-12 on your form for minors and alcohol and ordinance. I would at least like to see the law enforcement redo their calculations. One, you, our kids can now get little IDs to have someone buy things. Two, I, there's things out there that the police know, but the regular public don't know. So, I think you guys really, really need to do some background research on that one for the task force, the drug task force and everything. And this other one with the names, they're still called what they are. They still come from the same country. It's, it's that. The other one is, please sign soon on the bus system. That is, the major one I keep hearing is sign soon on the ATA bus system. If not, the city of Yon Arbor will do some of the analysis. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Additional citizen comments?
First, I'd like to say, I've had an opportunity to review the city's 2020 vision, their goals and their objectives, and I'm really excited about them. And what I'd like to know is, how do community members get involved in helping the city achieve the goals and objectives?
I, Ms. Zahn, I don't normally, we don't do a norm, we normally don't do a back-and-forth during the public comment period?
That's fine.
Okay.
So, okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
John Olson, Saline Area Chamber of Commerce. How would you like to remind council that the chamber has also been involved in the redevelopment-ready process in various ways? In particular, while Main Street has been creating the database of the four blocks downtown, we have been working in collaboration to encompass the greater Saline area, and eventually have those all linked together. So, I just want to make sure you guys knew that. I'd also like to, we just finished our 42nd Annual Christmas Parade. You know, probably a couple of hundred volunteers, 1,500 people walking in the parade, thousands downtown. I always hate thanking people, because you're always going to forget somebody, but I did want to thank the city, and our sponsors, and the police department, and the fire department, and DPW, and our volunteers, and all of the participants, because it takes a lot of people to make that all happen, and it was another wonderful event. And to finish off with that, next, this coming Saturday, we'll have Santa one more time down at the Bush's Plaza, and we'll do our treasure trail that will begin at Cottage Inn, and work its way around, and then you can sit down and have a chat with Santa, and we'll do carriage rides, and that's all going to happen this Saturday from 10 to 1:30.
Thank you very much. Additional citizen comments? Well, we appreciate everyone's comments. As it relates to the 2020 vision, first, we will probably be revising that sometime in the first quarter of 2018. There may or may not be opportunity for public comment, but if any individual would like to contribute to realizing the goals and objectives that we set as a community, I would be delighted to sit down with them. The city manager would be as well, to discuss possible collaborations. And in addition to that, I just want to say, and I know I'm speaking for myself and my colleagues, we want to congratulate the chamber and all the volunteers on an outstanding Christmas parade. I was at, went to worship at my church on Sunday, and I can't tell you how many people stopped me and said, "Please be sure to thank all the participants in the chamber for organizing such a marvelous event." So, job well done, John. Please convey that to your volunteers and to the other members of your staff as well. Please note upcoming meetings, and at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:57 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Gierball. Was that a second by Mitchell?
McClellan.
McClellan, excuse me. Seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned.